City Council meeting for Monday, August 5th, 2024 to order. And I'd ask that you all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Jensen.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Udara.
Here.
Nardini.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Erby.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Remus absent.
Hill.
Here.
Schenckel.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. Item 3.1 on our agenda is a special presentation proclamation for the American Legion Boys and Girls State Camp. And Eric Pulia is here. Oh, there he is, Hayden. All right, if you'll join me over there at the podium. So ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have a proclamation, but Eric Pulia, who's here, who's our incoming commander for our American Legion post, is going to tell you a little bit about what this proclamation is all about. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor Levin. Good evening. My name is Eric Pulia, and I currently serve as the junior vice commander of the Elmhurst American Legion. And I'm also the chairman for the Boy State program for the post, and I also assist in recruiting and facilitation for the American Legion Auxiliary Girl State Program. I would like to say thank you to Mayor Levin and the entire city council for recognizing these young men and women here tonight, all from Elmhurst, for attending and completing American Legion Boy State and the American Legion Auxiliary Girl State Programs. For many years, there didn't seem to be a concerted effort on promoting these camps locally, but in just two short years, we sent three Elmhurst boys to Boy State last year, five this year, and two to Girl State this year. It is my strong belief that these camps are necessary now more than ever. With the lasting effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, young people are in a desperate need of meaningful human interactions with their peers. These camps provide leadership lessons that will serve them well as they now enter their senior year of school and head off to college next year, hopefully. By putting these kids from all throughout the state in one place, from Rockford to Carbondale and everything in between, these camps allow kids to meet people they otherwise would not have met and expand their network and way of thinking. These camps revolve around many different aspects, like military history, sports, broadcasting, law enforcement, band, amongst others, but mainly focus on student government and mock Illinois General Assembly. In an era when many people feel that partisanship and extremism has gotten out of hand, these kids are taught the value of bipartisanship, compromise, and understanding different viewpoints. What is also heavily emphasized is the concept of civics, namely, community involvement. It is my sincere hope that as the years continue, the brand of Boy State and Girl State become more widely known, as I feel it is the best program that the American Legion currently has to offer. I once again thank you for honoring these kids here tonight and for their hard work.
I want you to, why don't you guys come up and, guys, gals, whoever you got, and Eric, if you want to introduce them?
Sure. Just meeting some of them tonight.
All right, well then, come up here, Annie, and we're going to figure out who you are as you stand.
I was gone for the last two months.
All right. Eric was on training out of state. All right. So I want to thank Eric before I read the proclamation for what you've done in terms of reactivating Elmhurst's participation in this program. It's a great program, and it's so great, they wrote so much in this proclamation that it'd be something I could have read if I were 20 years younger, but I'm going to try here in this little print. Whereas the American Legion's mission is to enhance the well-being of Americans, veterans, their families, our military, and our communities by its devotion to mutual helpfulness, whereas the American Legion's vision statement is "The American Legion: Veterans Strengthening America," and whereas "The American Legion advocates for upholding and defending the United States Constitution, equal justice, and opportunity for everyone and discrimination against no one, youth education, responsible citizenship, and honoring military service by observing and participating in memorial events." Whereas the nationwide program was founded in 1935 by three Illinois legionnaires, Hayes Kennedy, Harold Card, and Matthew Murphy, who organized the first Boys State at the Illinois State Fairgrounds in Springfield, and Girl State was first presented by the American Legion Women's Auxiliary in 1937. Whereas the American Legion educates mentors and leads new generations of America through the Boys and Girl State Programs held annually at Eastern Illinois University. Whereas famous alumni of the programs include Michael Jordan, Jane Pauli, Bill Clinton, Samuel Lito, Nancy Redd, Bon Jovi, Summer Walker, Bruce Springsteen, Lisa Gibbons, Neil Armstrong, to name a few. Whereas Boys State and Girl State Programs now currently exist in every state of our union with the exception of Hawaii and adhere to the concept teaching, of teaching government from the city to the state level. Whereas American Legion posts select high school juniors to attend the program in June, right after their junior year, with this year's expenses being paid for by the Quanis Club of Elmhurst for Boy State, American Legion and other American Legion Women's Auxiliary participation. Whereas state activities include levels of legislative sessions, political party caucuses, four different election cycles, general assemblies and concerts, law enforcement, presentations, recreational programs, and much more. Whereas this year, the American Legion posts 187 with the support of the Women's Auxiliary, the Quanis Club of Elmhurst, Paul Darley, chairman and CEO of WS Darley &amp; Company, and James Bohm of the First Trust Portfolio, sponsored to Illinois residents, Arthur, sorry, Amanda Schnur and Megan Farnin for Girl State Camp, who completed the camp, which adjourns Saturday, June 22nd, and sponsored five Elmhurst residents. Patrick Cahill. Edward Cook. Joseph Messersmith. Luke DiSimone. For Boys Camp and, which ended June 14th, there's more. Whereas Patrick Cahill was elected city mayor, Ryan Hayes was elected county treasurer, Joseph Messersmith was elected city alderman and city attorney, we know that's illegal, but okay. Luke DiSimone was elected city treasurer and state's attorney, Edward Cook was a speech competition finalist, and Megan Farnin, thank you, Megan, held the position of delegate at their respective camps. Well, after all of that, now therefore, I, Scott M. Levin, mayor of the city of Elmhurst, congratulate all for the selection and participation in the American Legion Boys and Girls State Camps. Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you.
Well done.
Congratulations.
Good work.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
John.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Congratulations.
You want me to just pull it up yet?
All right, so a little bit more positive news for Elmhurst at this point.
The next item on the agenda is a special presentation by the Illinois Chiefs of Police Association. I'm going to ask our chief, Mike McLean, to come up and bring the people that need to be brought up with him to take over the program at this point. Chief McLean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, I'd like to ask that Chief Eric Barden, who is vice president of the Illinois Police Chiefs Association, and John Milner, retired chief of the Elmhurst Police Department and also with the Illinois Chiefs Association, to approach. So we are going to take this opportunity to recognize some truly extraordinary police work that happened in April of 2023. It is a moment that I consider a miracle, but truly, a lot of hard work, effort, and smart police work went into making that miracle happen. In that day, we got a call that morning, a normal weekday morning, for a teenager that was standing on the top of our parking deck, a seven-floor parking deck, 70-foot drop below. Witnesses saw her standing over the railing and onto the ledge, and she was standing, looking as if she was going to jump. When the first police officers arrived, they tried to begin talking with her, however, she wouldn't really talk with the officers very much, and she alternated between standing on the ledge and sitting back down on the railing, standing back on the ledge and going back down on the railing. As myself, like many of the officers there, we were steeling ourself to witness a tragedy, and instead, you know, what we saw was something that truly was a miraculous saving of a life. So at this moment in time, I'd like to ask Deputy Chief Gandy, Detective Joan Velez, Officer Jim O'Connor, Officer Mike Hamblin to approach, stand over here. Actually, why don't we go up here, we can see a little better up high. So as the, as the officers responded and went up to the top of the seventh-floor deck, they were able to eventually build a rapport. Detective Joan Velez, who was a member of the Elmhurst Police Crisis Negotiation Team, was able to build a rapport with the young lady and be able to build enough trust with her to get close enough to ultimately take hold of her wrist. And that moment created an opportunity that allowed Deputy Chief Gandy and Officers O'Connor and Hamblin to move in quickly, grab her, and pull her over the railing and back to safety, ultimately saving her life. And tonight, they are going to be recognized with the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police Life Saving Award, so I'll turn it over to Chief Barden.
Thank you, chief. Good evening, all. My name is Eric Barden. I am the chief of police with the Zion Police Department. Honorable mayor and council, thank you for having me and soliciting this award. The reason why we do this, and the reason why we want to identify good police work, is because we believe in our hearts and we believe and we know that there are so many good officers out there that are really risking their lives and putting themselves on the line every day, every shift. One comment I want to make here, bravery is the capacity to perform properly even when scared half to death. General Omar Bradley said those wise words. So tonight, I want to present, this is a life-saving award, and I'll read it as it's written. I'm going to probably forget everybody's names, my apologies. But tonight, I want to offer this, and this is the 2023 Life Saving Award. Officers Velez, Gandy, Hamblin, and O'Connor. For your commitment, bravery, and excellence in law enforcement, the special recognition honors your heroic efforts from an incident that occurred on April 11th, 2023. On that date, those officers were among those dispatched to the Addison Parking Lot in the downtown Elmhurst, or in downtown Elmhurst for a report of what appeared to be a young girl attempting to jump. Officers at the scene approached the girl and began negotiations to talk her down. With the quick actions of all the officers involved, the girl was brought to safety. Their critical life-saving actions are consistent with the highest levels of service. Thank you to all of you. On behalf of myself and all of the Illinois chiefs, our president, Mark Maton, we thank you for your service, we thank you for your commitment and continued success. Thank you. So next, I want to bring up our director for the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police, our director of public relations, John Milner. Thank you.
So mayor and alderman and city manager, it's great to be back with you guys, and especially tonight, because this is a great honor. And speaking from the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police, I want to tell you this, it's not just a thing that just goes out there, oh, they did this, they did that. They look very carefully at each of these awards and members of the community. And what they did is in this one, this is one of these things where if they weren't there, things would be very different. Clearly, each of their actions made a positive difference in the outcome of this. Clearly, it did. And so I'm just going to read a little bit to you here. The Illinois Association of Chiefs, who are always seeking out ways to honor local departments, and sometimes it's not that easy. This was easy for us because of the difficulty involved and because of the outcome and the way it happened. Okay? And so we're looking for those things, upholding the highest standards possible. The Elmhurst Police Detective Joan Velez, Officer James O'Connor, Michael Hamblin, James Gandy, achieved such an honor tonight as we award each of them the IACP Life Saving Award. The special recognition honors their heroic efforts on April 11th, 2023. 10:25 in the morning, officers responded to a report of a distraught teenage girl on the top floor who was repeatedly walking to the edge, up and down, ready to jump, and as they approached, they saw the girl climb over the edge. So this is like quick action on their part, and it was like timed, and it was, I don't know how you guys did it, but God bless. Approximately 70 feet up, they immediately began negotiations and through establishing rapport of the girl and their training, the officers were able to bring her back to the railing safely. We'd like to recognize these officers for their skillful, direct action that saved a 15-year-old girl's life. Their critical life-saving actions are consistent with the highest level of service and tradition provided by the Elmhurst Police Department. Elmhurst Police Department always providing the best, just an FYI. You guys are all blessed to have this department. So congratulations to Detective Velez, Officer O'Connor, Hamblin, Gandy, on this accomplishment. The Illinois chiefs are proud of you and all the Elmhurst Police Departments for all their accomplishments. We believe that everyone should be too, you know. You guys truly, in this community, are blessed to have this police department. You probably know that already, but I'm telling you, this is the best, and they, their motto was providing the best under the chief's guidance, you know, things are really good here, so God bless. Congratulations and thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Do you have any nice little buttons?
Yep.
Thank you.
Kids are lucky to have you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Thank you again.
Everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Applause.
If anyone, we have a very exciting agenda this evening, so if anyone wants to stay, you may, but if you want to go out and congratulate each other, we're going to take about a 30-second break. All right, we'll go back into session. We're in item four on the agenda receipt of written communications from the public. We have two that have been put on the dais. Are there any other written communications that any member of the public would like to deliver to the council? Written communications, if so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to public forum. Clerk Tamers, anyone signed in for public forum?
Yes, Kristy Ainge.
All right. Thank you. And Kristy, as you know, this is an opportunity, back microphone there, this is an opportunity to address the council. You have three minutes on any topic you choose. Please state your name. Address is optional, it may help us get back to you. Otherwise, the floor is yours. Please proceed.
Would you like me to close the door?
We can't close the door because it's a public, but if you come close to the microphone, closer.
Okay. Good.
Or pull it down to make, there you go.
Good.
Yes, we're good.
Hi, my name is Kristy Ainge. I would like to comment on the asset referral of the green space between Schiller and Third. I would like the city to consider the following city ordinances and how they affect the findings of the asset referral regarding the green space. The code states, "No residential block shall exceed 800 feet," and defines a block as parcels of land bounded by community streets or a combination of community streets, public parks, cemeteries, railroad right-ofways, and the like. The distance between Willow and Berto from parcel to parcel is over 1,200 feet. Therefore, when the city unanimously voted to allow the vacation of Avon Road, the nitty development absorbed Avon Road and the green space became the line of demarcation for these residential blocks. This line of demarcation is required by code. It is required to maintain residential block sizes that are characteristic to all of Elmhurst. This would consequently reduce the number of houses to generate the total potential revenue for the city significantly. The projected total revenue stated in the asset referral is directly related to the number of houses developed and therefore also reduced. This lessens the value of the green space as a developmental real estate asset. I have submitted further detail with tonight's written communications. I hope you will consider it and investigate this further. This has major implications to the local neighborhood that surrounds the green space and implications to all of Elmhurst fiscally. The green space as is provides so much benefit to the city by means of stormwater management, recreation and safe passage, and sustainability. Please reconsider the sale of this green space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen Eckberg.
Good evening, council.
Would you state your name and address as optional?
Good evening, council. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
If you can come closer to the microphone, that would help.
Start out and just state your name.
I am Kathleen Eckberg, and my husband and I live on the north side at 677 Van Aken Street near Mariano's Grocery. I wanted to talk about one issue and then two quick comments to the council. To start with, an issue is an ongoing experience for a few years. I know talking about this may help other residents. It concerns two unlikely topics that together have caused a somewhat apprehensive situation for my family. It involves postal mail delivery and one company soliciting their service in the city. To summarize as efficiently as possible, I am having continued postal mail problems, mentioned recently, because I'm supposed to be receiving mailed advertisements from local real estate agents, which they told me they are sending to me via post office. However, my postal mail delivery only gives me real estate advertisements from just about one company. This is especially troublesome and appears extremely suspicious. The advertising pieces from local agents are not being delivered by the post office. Their mail advertisements are seemingly stolen or thrown out by my mail delivery. It makes you think if there's some reason why. In fact, I want to focus on one company that I believe has extremely questionable business practices. To make a long story short, for the last two years, I have received 18 postcards from this company related to the selling possibility of my house. I have never contacted this company, however, the company still solicits me. Out of the 18 postcards I have received, the company owns the same business address with a town and a zip code that do not match. The business address is a UPS store mailbox account. In addition, on a monthly basis, at least 15 times, the company has given 15 different telephone numbers. The company is Jeff By's Houses. This is a concern for my family, and I am informing the council and city residents of this information. For the council, I have two quick comments that'll take about a minute. First, in light of the current US president's choice to allow millions of illegal aliens into the country, I know that there have been aliens either staying or passing through the city of Elmhurst, even if just using public transportation. Because of this ongoing situation, which may require future rules, ordinance, and governmental policies, I believe many residents would like the council members to start a conversation about this current and future environment. For example, one issue that may come up is illegal labor trafficking of people, including women and families. Thank you for your consideration. And second, I wanted to thank the mayor for making the comment in a past council meeting about the incident with President Donald Trump on July 13 of '24. The mayor's comment was appropriate, timely, and an important message to remind all citizens about the political and governmental environment that affects different levels, including the city of Elmhurst, DuPage County, Illinois, and the United States as one nation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all that signed up.
All right, that's the end of those who have, that's, those are the only two who have signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make public comment but did not have an opportunity to sign in in advance of the meeting? If so, please raise your hand. All right, seeing none, we will close public comment. Thank you. Onto announcements, are there any announcements from the dais? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Tamers, would you please read the consent agenda?
7.1 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on July 15th, 2024. 7.2 accounts payable August 5th, 2024. 7.3 referral historic preservation ordinance and historical, historic preservation commission. 7.4 report case 24 PT, Arcadian amended conditional use for pile-on-site 880 North York. 7.5 report food and beverage tax requirements. 7.6 report migration to Tyler Technology Software as a Service. 7.7 report crossing guard services RFP selection. 7.8 report Knights of Columbus Annual Classic Car Show. 7.9 an ordinance amending section 44.92 entitled Stop Intersections enumerated of Article 6 entitled Special Stops of Chapter 44 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Elmhurst Municipal Code. 7.10 an ordinance amending section 44.74 entitled Yield Right-of-Way Streets of Article 5 titled Driving, Overtaking, and Passing of Chapter 44 entitled Motor Vehicle and Traffic of the Elmhurst Municipal Code. 7.11 a resolution adopting and amending, an amended new sidewalk installation policy. And 7.12 resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement and release for the resolution of civil litigation.
Thank you, Clerk Tamers. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove, either for further discussion or to vote against? Alderman Erby?
Thank you, mayor. 7.7.
7.7. Alderman Toledo?
7.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Tamers, would you please read the consent agenda?
7.1 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on July 15, 2024. 7.2 accounts payable August 5, 2024. $7,851,690.97. 7.3 referral historic preservation ordinance and historical historic preservation commission. 7.4 report case 24 PTI Arcadian amended conditional use for pile on site 880 North York. 7.5 report food and beverage tax requirements. 7.6 report migration to Tyler Technology Software as a Service. 7.7 report crossing guard services RFP selection. 7.8 report Knights of Columbus Annual Classic Car Show. 7.9 an ordinance amending section 44.92 entitled stop intersections enumerated of Article 6 entitled special stops of Chapter 44 entitled motor vehicles and traffic of the Elmhurst Municipal Code. 7.10 an ordinance amending section 44.74 entitled yield right-ofway streets of Article 5 titled driving overtaking and passing of Chapter 44 entitled motor vehicle and traffic of the Elmhurst Municipal Code. 7.11 a resolution adopting and amending an amended new sidewalk installation policy. And 7.12 resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement and release for the resolution of civil litigation.
Thank you, Clerk Tamers. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove either for further discussion or to vote against? Alderman Erby.
Thank you, Mayor. 7.7.
7.7. Alderman Toledo.
7.11.
7.11. All right. May have a motion to pass the consent agenda minus items 7.7 and 7.11. Alderman Jensen with a motion. Alderman Nardini with a second. Clerk Tamers, please call the roll.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Brimas absent Hill.
Aye.
Shenko.
Aye.
13 ayes, 0 nays, 1 absent.
13 ayes, 0 nays, 1 absent. The consent agenda minus items 7.7 and 7.11 is adopted. Clerk Tamers, please read the report on 7.7.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee to approve the selection of Andy Frain Services for the provision of crossing guard services throughout the 2024, 2025, 2025, 2026, and 2026, 2027 school years at rates of $29.60, $30.49, and $31.40 respectively. The requested contract is for a three-year term with two one-year renewal options, if mutually agreed upon pursuant to the terms set forth in the city purchasing policy. Signed Alderman Michael Brennan Chair, Alderman Jacob Hill Vice Chair, not signed Alderman Guido Nardini.
All right, may have a motion to approve item 7.7 to bring the report before council motion. Alderman Brennan, second. Alderman Hill. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a report that is a contract that secures crossing guards for the Elmhurst District 205. We were pleased to see that there are three responses to the RFP. That said, as we got deeper into the proposal process, it became abundantly clear that Andy Frain was the only firm that could deliver the services. So hence, the recommendation is in this report. It is a three-year contract, and that's the report.
Thank you. Alderman Brennan, other discussion. Alderman Erby.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the work the City Council and Public Affairs and Safety has done on this. I am pro wanting to get our kids to school safe. I have no problems with Andy Frain. Tonight, this came up as an item that we've had for four years on the, an existing four-year contract. And in that time, we've had a new city purchasing policy. As you'll notice, as Clerk Tamers read, it says pursuant to the terms set forth in the city purchasing policy. So we did that on finance. We spent a lot of time on it. It has a whole section on competitive bidding process and the request for proposal and how it's handled. On page eight of that city purchasing policy, it says city council shall have the authority to reject all competitive bids or parts of those bids when the public interest will be served thereby. The two parts of the response proposals from the other two vendors, when I read through them, I didn't think they failed. I think they had some validity. I wasn't sure from the report if Public Affairs and Safety deliberated on that. I can tell you, as me on city council, I haven't reviewed or got a vote on that yet, whether we should cancel those other two proposals. We also have in the RFP that this is a, let me flip my notes, apologize. Have a performance standard. So that's a new item that didn't exist when the original contract was done in 2020. So the new policy states that we have to have a performance standard RFP process. And we have a termination agreement. Part of the RFP was we can terminate the vendor by, if we're not happy. We can read it off, but basically says we have the right to terminate their services for failing to come up with a standard. Well, we don't have a standard other than the 20 crossings, 20 guards, two extra relief guards, and a supervisor. So at what point in the performance of this are we allowed to terminate the agreement? Because we don't have a matrix that says, okay, well, if you fail 80%, 20% of the time, then we can terminate the contract. We're not happy. That's not written into the, in the RFP or the agreement. That, in my opinion, is required under page eight of our purchasing policy. We also do not have a budget line item. I have no idea where this is, this money's coming from. I'm sure it's coming from somewhere, but usually in our reports, we have a general ledger account number, and we have a budget status, and we know it's coming out of there, and we have enough money to pay for that. We do not know that tonight on this report. So I went searching. It's not in the 2024 budget I can find. I've been called out on council where I can't find stuff. I'm hoping we can find that. We also were sent a city consultants budget list during the budget process of 2024 to '25. Andy Frain is not on there. I did check that. So we have some systematic problems with the professional services agreement, which mandates performance standards. They're not present. We've also have a four-year policy on our purchasing policy that contracts are reviewed every four years. This one is a three plus one plus one. So I'm not sure why we're writing contracts that are contrary to our purchasing policy. So those are kind of the key points that I have a problem with. Maybe they can be remedied. There is time to remedy this, to get it back to council before school starts. So I would like to, you know, with the RFP process and not having a performance standard, it almost negates the contracts because we didn't write the performance standards in in the RFP so that the respondents could reply. And then, when I was looking all this on Friday, there was no contract in the board docs. They somehow showed up recently. I don't know if anybody noticed that, but I do not remember a contract being present Friday on board docs. I found it today. Did not have time to review it. So I'm in a state of flux here. So with that, I'll yield back to the mayor.
All right, well, just, so we're all working on this together. The existing contract, this is an extension of the existing contract, which has a seven-day cancellation clause by us at any time. So whatever standard we deem Andy Frain to have failed, we can terminate in seven days. The contract would come before the council in two weeks after the report, just like any other ordinance that we would pass. The contract would come back for approval, and I can't imagine why it wouldn't have the exact same seven-day cancellation clause. The funds are part of the police budget. They're in the police budget. So I'm not sure that that answers all of your questions, but I want to put that out there. And then, Chair, did you want to add anything?
The only pertinent information I would point to is that Andy Frain has provided these services successfully over the past four years. If you look at other elements of this, the other, you know, companies that were vying for this work, one is new to the area. The other one was asking some, you know, very specific language with respect to sharing liability if there were an incident. At the end of the day, we found that the issues, the one that's new to the area, struggled to provide references. Andy Frain was the clear winner of this RFP process. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Additional discussion? Alderman Nardini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am here to discuss the report separate and apart from Alderman Erby's concerns. I'm on Public Affairs and Safety, and I didn't sign the report, but I support it, and here's why. I didn't sign it for two reasons. The bid process that we used solicited three bids, and only one of them was viable. In business, you can't really shop bids if there's only one that's one to be able to be considered. My other concern is that it's a $300,000 expense of our neighbor's money, and District 205 isn't involved. I understand that addressing our streets and the safety of our streets and our policing comes from the city and not the schools, but I believe that any part of the conversation should involve them if this contract exists only during morning school hours and afternoon school departure hours, and only during the time of year that the school is open. Having said all of that, here's why I support it. I wish we got more bids, but in conversation with the city manager, I understand that the market for these services is not that soft, and it's important to understand that we're not shopping these three quotes in a vacuum. We have two newcomers, one that couldn't honor our insurance concerns and the other that couldn't staff supervisor, and then the third that is a contractor that we've used before and that has proven themselves in the past contract. Regarding District 205 and sharing into the cost, it's clear that any intergovernmental agreement with District 205 isn't going to take place between now and the beginning of school. This contract is a three-year with renewal periods. That strikes me as a more reasonable runway for any amount of time that we could talk to city council about it. So that they didn't feel ambushed, I have reached out to each one of the school board members to say, over the next three years, somebody on city council would like to be able to have a cup of coffee with you and maybe look into sharing an expense like this. I've spoken to Alderman Shenko, who is interested, and if her concerns have anything to do with the tenacity that she has about Conrad Fisher issues, I'm sure she will be well interested in engaging the city council on this. Ultimately, what we're talking about is, on this report and in everything in my committee, Public Affairs and Safety is ensuring a protocol of safety in our community. What we're talking about, the inside baseball of the bid process and whether or not District 205 shares into the cost, is less important than having intersections staffed with guards when grade schoolers are crossing the streets. I do have issues with the bidding. I do think that there is a peer community model of city school board sharing into that lift, but neither of those concerns will get addressed before the first day of school. I support this report. I ask council to do so also.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you. Since this was, this report was pulled, I also want to make a couple of comments. I have spoken with some of you up here on the dais in regards to this issue prior to tonight. I agree with Alderman Nardini's comments in regards to starting to have a conversation with the school district. I think they should be at the table. I think that they should probably, if not take on all the costs, but take on some of the costs in the near future. With that said, I do have just one question, and I do, I did read the report, and I understand in regards to, I believe it's called crossing guard services, the concern was not having a field supervisor. I don't know if anybody on the committee or staff can respond to this, but, oh, sorry, my watch is listening. But it seems like other communities are using that company with no field supervisor, and seems to be, my perception is, that they've been using them for a while and don't have issue or concern with that model. Is there any additional feedback in regards to why we have concerns of not having a field supervisor, other than that is what we're used to?
Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So with respect to the field supervisor, I mean, there are a lot of crosswalks that are, you know, every day and every afternoon come into play. And the supervisor's role, as well as, you know, what's new in the request this year is to relief, you know, crossing guards as well, because what we were experiencing was, you know, people calling in sick, and that put burden on Elmhurst Police to put, you know, an actual officer at that crossing guard last minute. And we felt that the whole orchestration and the value of the service is heightened with that supervisor, as well as the relief crossing guard. So the relief crossing guard was a new requirement because of past history and experience that we saw, and we do believe that the supervisor increases the quality of getting people out to the 20-plus crossing guard areas.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, further discussion? Alderman Erby.
Thank you, Mayor. When we look at the three respondents to the RFP, and we look at Andy Frain's, the report says that it's $20 an hour, and it's 306,880 is the total. If you take the 68% of the cost to the crossing guards, and you do the math, and you tie it back to the total number of hours that the crossing guards are going to be there, it doesn't work. I personally have applied to Andy Frain, and I was quoted $17 an hour within the last year. So I'm not sure where the report got the numbers from, but they don't work.
The difference.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll turn it back.
Yeah, the difference, whatever we pay Andy Frain doesn't pass through necessarily to a crossing guard. They're entitled to a profit, so.
Well, it says clearly here in the report, $20 an hour to the crossing guards.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah. All right, Alderman Brennan, did you discuss, I don't know what the rates are currently, or?
As far as the numbers, Mayor, that, you know, this is something that staff looked at. I would, I would need to look at the numbers further. I'm not quite understanding Alderman Erby's concern or question.
Unfortunately, I mean, these are questions that are probably best presented, you know, going through, I know rate times equals distance, but how we get there, you know, sort of on the spot on the dais is a little hard for people to respond. So I would encourage people to ask ahead of time with staff if there's questions about how calculations are made, but if the chair doesn't know, and obviously, I demonstrated my inability to answer, but, you know, I assume I have to rely on staff to vet the numbers. Alderman Deuter, did you want to add?
So actually, if I could just add one comment with respect to the rates. One of the other things that Andy Frain, you know, did was that they didn't increase the rates from this past year. So therefore, whatever rates that will be in the contract, you know, will fall out in the ordinance and tick and tie back to the 23, 24 rates. I apologize for interrupting. Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Alderman Brennan. Alderman Deuter.
I was just going to suggest that the $20 per hour might be some type of average, and so someone who's just starting may have an entry rate. Someone who's been there for a number of years may be earning a bit more. So $20 is probably not what every single crossing guard earns.
Thank you. All right, additional discussion? All right.
Jensen. Jensen. Bram.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
No.
Deuter.
Aye.
Brimas absent Hill.
Aye.
Shenko.
Aye.
12 ayes, 1 nay, 1 absent.
12 ayes, 1 nay, 1 absent. 7.11 passes. Onto item eight, reports and recommendations of appointed elected officials. Oh, oh.
Add another one, Paul.
Oh, I'm sorry. 711, I get it. All right. I apologize. Clerk Tamers, 711, would you read the resolution?
A resolution adopting the amended new sidewalk installation policy.
Here we have a motion to bring
Here we have a motion to bring 711 to be approved. Alderman Bastido, Second Alderman Cahill.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is a resolution adopting the changes to the new sidewalk policy, installation policy, which came from a referral. The report was approved unanimously a couple weeks ago. Just to refresh everyone's memory, there were some changes made that include increasing the city's contribution percentage, the way the votes are calculated, and other changes. So this current sidewalk policy has not been very successful. Out of the 41 times it was initiated, it was only successful five times over the last couple decades. So the committee felt like these changes would help to make it more successful, which is something the city should encourage, since sidewalks really make our community safer, more walkable, they increase curb appeal, and have other benefits. But I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. Alderman Toledo.
Thank you. Thank you to the committee and the council for the deliberations at the meeting on July 15th, I believe it was. I was not present at that meeting, so I wanted to take an opportunity to just voice my perspective on this topic and to vote against the topic. You know, I think it's admirable what the committee and the council voted to do in looking at this. I have a slightly different perspective on how we think about this policy, because what this policy requires in its existing form, and in probably the soon-to-be-changed form, is a tax on property owners. That is how the majority of this gets funded in this policy. And my concern is primarily that the current policy, with a 60% threshold for voting to approve moving forward with the creation of the special service area to fund the 50% cost share, is a higher hurdle, and should be a higher hurdle, because you are imposing a tax on the people who vote against it. And so by changing that hurdle from a 60% of the property owners on the block who want that tax to build the sidewalk, to only 50.01% threshold, means that you will have four out of 10, or 49 out of 100, property owners possibly, who don't want to pay that tax or cannot afford that tax for 10 years. It's essentially like someone buying a home in a neighborhood, and then 10 years later imposing a homeowner fee on them, and they didn't want it or choose to have it. And I, I have a, just a fundamental problem with that. You know, people buy homes in Elmhurst and in many other communities, knowing that they don't have a sidewalk, and accepting those trade-offs for the price that they're paying for that home. So that's my primary reason for not supporting this change. The second reason is, I don't feel that there is a groundswell of community uproar against the current policy. I don't often see people in an organized group opposing the current policy as it stands. There have not been any community organizations created to request this change. This change is led by a group of aldermen who believe that this is a priority, and I haven't heard that support from a majority of the community, like we have with other topics over time on the council, including stormwater and the open space in my, in my ward that is currently being discussed. And finally, this is an expensive precedent to create. We already have extreme pressures on our budget, as many of you are aware of, and this will increase the city's general fund contribution that we have to allocate to this new policy. Putting it in perspective, I know that the report talks about what would have happened if one of these projects were applied with the new policy, and it was a $70,000 difference, which doesn't seem like a ton of money. But if you look at, over time, what this could look like if all of the sidewalks were eventually supported under the new policy, it's a $6.5 million difference in present value terms, if all of the sidewalks were paved under this new policy with a 75% cost share versus a 50% cost share. So it's not small amounts of money that we're talking about over the lifetime of this policy being put into place. So those are my comments. I wanted to be clear about why I wasn't going to support this, and I thank everybody for your patience. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Alderman Bastido.
Yes, my only comment is that this does not obligate us to pay, you know, $6.5 million or any amount. So the way that we pay for this under the changes is the same as it was before, and traditionally, we've put about $50,000 a year to cover our cost of this project. It's not close to covering that now, under the current policy, and it wouldn't be enough to cover it under the new policy. So, you know, the City Council would have to approve those funds down the road. This is not obligating us to any cost, just to make that clear. It is saying that the policy means we would cover more, but it would take City Council action at that time.
Alderman Nardini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question to Alderman Bastido, that $50,000 that we allocate each year, has that gone towards construction of sidewalks in the last decade?
No, it has not.
Alderman Hill, then Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that, you know, I referenced Alderman Toledo's comments about community-initiated revisiting the sidewalk installation policy. I think 41 attempts, or beginning the process, 41 blocks, trying to get sidewalks installed, whether organized for or against, I think does show interest in the sidewalk installation policy, and I think for it to fail, an overwhelming majority of the time that this process has gone through, is kind of self-evident that it's incumbent on us to look at this policy if it fails so much. And indeed, I'm really surprised it's taken us so long to do that, because I do see the interest there, and I see the, the very low success rate of this policy, and I don't understand, again, why we would leave it in place as it is a policy that's not working. So I'm considering the alternative here, that we would leave a failing policy in place. If we have a problem with the policy and the costs it incurs, I think we have to talk about getting rid of a cost-sharing policy, and I can think of some other alternatives that I would find appealing that are outside the scope of this report. But I think there is interest from citizens. We had one speak here, a public comment at that City Council meeting, talked a little bit about the effort that was put into the glade sidewalk proposal. So I do think there's interest, and I think it's incumbent on us to revisit this policy. So again, I support this report and resolution.
Alderman Bram.
Thank, excuse me, thank you. Sorry. In regards to Alderman Toledo's comments, I want to touch on, and Alderman Hill just kind of stole my thunder in regards to the data or the stats, really expressing to everybody on where this policy lies and where the support is. There is support for sidewalks, and I'm not saying 100% of the community without sidewalks want to see sidewalks. That's not the case, from my anecdotal evidence. But I will tell you, ever since I moved into town, and I've had many residents come to me, and I've had a couple of streets, or maybe more than a couple in my 21 years, make the attempt, and people are defeated. They, they're defeated because the process is so laborious, the process is difficult, the process on a public asset is costing them dollars. So I agree with Alderman Toledo's comments in regards to the dollars and cents, but the other piece would be, then the city should pay for it, it's a city asset 100%. The city should pay 100%, and therefore, we wouldn't burden, I believe Alderman Hill may have been alluding to this fact, on his comments, but then the resident wouldn't have any financial burden. We thought as a committee, I don't want to speak for the committee, but I thought the committee's position was, let's increase the city contribution, but keep some accountability with the residents who do want it. And that's why this report, in my perspective, and I did not even try to argue the fact of increasing it to 100% city costs, and totally removing the residents from this equation for sidewalks. But I do believe there is support, and I think changing the policy is way overdue. And I'll give everybody here and everybody within town a little history lesson. When I first was elected, there was no sidewalk, new sidewalk policy. I was on the Public Works Committee when this was created, and I wasn't satisfied with it then, and there's been tweaks along the way. One of the tweaks that I wasn't satisfied with, and I don't recall if I voted for or against it at that time, but was, it's, the policy started out with this voting aspect being 50, greater than 50%. Then, one of my fellow aldermen at the time, and one of the changes along the way over these years, changed it to 60% or greater. We're just actually going back to what the original policy was, is greater than 50%. And I get the tax on people, and I get that concern, as Alderman Toledo expressed, but quite honestly, I mean, we elect presidents with greater than 50%. Why are we putting a higher standard on, you know, should there be sidewalks or not? So I think the support is there, and I think a revision of this policy will see if one of the greater hurdles is the price aspect, by the city paying a greater majority of it, because it is a city asset. So I think this will help things. I don't think this creates any precedent. I agree with the comments of capital needs and everything we have in front of us, but we're up here to make difficult decisions, and if, I hope everybody supports it like I do, but I think this is dollars well-spent, and we'll see if, how many dollars will be spent under the new policy if this moves forward tonight.
Additional discussion? All right. Clerk Tamer.
Yep, sorry. Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
No.
Park.
Aye.
Udara.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Beremis, absent.
Ho.
Aye.
Shenko.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nay, one absent.
Twelve ayes, one nay, one absent, 7.11 is adopted. And now I'll go to Item 8, Reports and Recommendations of Appointed Elected Officials. I do want to say that Item 712 of our consent agenda was the approval of a settlement agreement regarding civil litigation, and I only comment because there was press that indicated that, you know, there was a woman filed a claim, and we were settling it. Sometimes we're forced into making settlement agreements just because there's potential liability, and we want to buy certainty. Sometimes we may have some exposure, and it's still a good policy to settle. The press on this one's a little bit misleading, because in this case, there was a claim, we defended it to the point with some very large settlement demands. The council stood behind our police department. We went to trial, and a jury rendered a verdict in favor of the city. So we won. The, as anyone is entitled to do, the plaintiff in that case appealed, and we continued to resist settlement demands, having already won, and it got to the point where the amount of the demand was what I would call nominal nuisance value, would be far less than the cost to proceed before the Court of Appeals and once again win. So I say that so that people understand that when we're right, and we know we're right, we will defend, and we did. And I'm very proud that our city attorneys, in particular Andy Acker, saw this thing through, and the council as a whole was very pleased by everything that happened. So we are settling, but we're settling a case we already won, essentially. A couple other announcements, the City of Elmhurst Police and Fire Department will be hosting Public Safety Night out on August 8th, 2024. It'll take place in Barron's Park on the east parking lot from 6:00 to 8:30. This will be a memorable experience at this safety-focused event. There'll be kids' games and activities, giveaways, demonstration, music, and a chance to meet our police and fire personnel, and who knows, maybe we'll get another landing by the superior ambulance. Helicopter, not the ambulance. The Senior Citizens Commission and the City of Elmhurst invite you to a community conversation hosted by me. The presentations will include Elmhurst alerts, transportation information, there'll be presentations by our police and fire departments with safety tips related to seniors. This community conversation will be held right here at City Hall on Saturday, August 17th, at 10:00 a.m., as they say in the commercial announcement that says here. Space will be limited, so please call 309-703-7748 to make a reservation. 309-703-7748. And I believe that's information on our website as well. Next, the Craft Beer Fest is approaching quickly. If any member of the public would like to volunteer, the fest is September 4th at the Elmhurst Museum grounds. Did I say 14th? 14th, 14th. Some of the volunteer opportunities are in the morning, starting at 9:00 a.m. to help set up. This year, the fest will go from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. with takedown until approximately 7:30 p.m., so there's takedown help as well. We have various volunteer opportunities for being a greeter, attaching patron wristbands, pouring beer, helping fill buckets with ice, dumping water, handing out programs, and at the end of the fest, breaking everything down, and all volunteers receive a meal, breakfast or lunch, and a T-shirt. And Kathy Jordan, the Chair of our senior commission, asked that I would make a specific request for celebrity beer pourers, which is anyone on the City Council. It's a lot of fun, so I hope that you will contact Kathy if you're able to be not only a volunteer, but a celebrity volunteer. I think that is all I have for this evening. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple announcements. The neighborhood roll calls this week are Tuesday and Wednesday. The Thursday is moved to Wednesday because of the Public Safety Night in Barron's Park that the mayor just announced. Tuesdays is at Fairfield and Elm Park. Wednesdays is at Beverly and Avery, and they, but they both start at 7:00 p.m. And then the other announcement is that this Friday, the Lions Club will hold their reverse raffle, which is one of the club's big fundraisers. There are tickets available. You can contact me if you'd like to go. It includes dinner and a raffle ticket. It's a night of fun, and I strongly encourage the community to support the Lions Club.
Thank you, City Manager. Are there any other reports from elected officials this evening? Clerk Tamer. I know you have one.
I do. Our consolidated election for 2025, April 1st, 2025, everything is starting a little bit earlier this year. The packets can begin distribution as of August 20th. However, we have not received the official package yet from the county, so as soon as we do, we will make them available. Hopefully, I know we have a DuPage Clerks meeting on August 14th, so we should definitely have them by then. Also to note, the first filing of the packets this year, instead of December, is November 12th, and the last day to file is November 18th. So November 12th through November 18th, so everything's about a month earlier. But again, I keep checking every day, and the packets are not available yet. And they are, we'll make them available to everyone, and that's it, Mayor.
So April 1st, this isn't April Fool's kind of joke.
This is not an April Fool's.
This is not a joke. This is a real election that we're going to have.
Correct, correct.
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Alderman Toledo.
Can I just ask if the county clerk has given any reason for the, the month, like, like, I guess pulling forward the process by a month? Or why the packets are not available at this time?
No, and I should hopefully know more on August 14th, as to why.
It's a change in, the state legislature has changed it. I think it started with some moving up of primary dates as well, so it's, it's being passed down from the General Assembly. I don't know why we don't have the packets yet, maybe they were kind of surprised themselves, I don't know, but I do know the requirement, the change of dates is at the state level.
All right. All right. Any, any other announcement, not announcements, reports? All right. Any other business to be brought before the council? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Brennan, Second Alderman Cahill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Thank you.